2025, and I'd appreciate if you turn off your cell phones as this meeting is being recorded. And Ellen, can you please do our roll call?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Ms. Callan-Carson?
Present.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Ms. DeBaco?
Present.
Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
No.
No, DeRoberts.
Who was it? Oh, I'm sorry. She's not here tonight. Okay. My bad. There we go. Okay. Mrs. Drew?
Here.
Mrs. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Lackavoli?
Here.
Chairperson, Mrs. Granato? She's here. And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Ms. Nushka Gandhi?
Running late. She called us. She had a conflict.
Okay. I'll note the time when she gets there. Thank you. Can I have our girls' championship swim team lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? Just stand there and lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. And we're going to go right into student and staff recognition here. So tonight, we have our student recognition of our Weathersfield High School CIAC Class M Girl Swim Team Champions, and we're so proud of you. So thank you for being here. Siobhan, is she here? Can you come on up?
Sterling.
Sterling, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. When I first took over my position here at Weathersfield High School, one of my first meetings was with Coach Lee. And I'd heard a lot about the swim and dive program prior to me taking this position. And when Coach Lee came in my office, he had a couple frank words, he said. He said, "We don't really care about conference championships in this school. We care about state championships." The girls have won their 17th straight CCC North Championships, which is an incredible acknowledgement, so clap for that. And they obviously captured their first-ever state championship this year. These girls not only excel in the pool, but also in the classroom. It seems like you're not able to get into the pool at Weathersfield High School unless you have a 3.7 GPA or higher, as all of these girls really excel in the classroom as well. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up Coach Lee Schwartzman to talk about their season and their championship run.
I promise I'm not redoing the banquet speech. All right. I want to thank you for having us to celebrate the incredible season of the 2025 Lady Eagles Swim and Dive Team. First off, I want to thank the administration at the high school and especially Mr. Scanlon for coming in and supporting us so much and really being open to learn about our program. As a teacher and a coach, my three main goals for all my students and athletes every year are to teach goal-setting, working hard to reach those goals, and having a growth mindset. This team, led by the seniors, hit the trifecta. While the Lady Eagles have had a lot of success, including winning the last 17 straight conference titles, the team has been reaching for the ultimate goal, a state championship. After the previous three years' results of third, second, and third, that was the goal for the year. It definitely took some coercing by me to convince them that it was possible, because making a goal that has never been done before is scary. Anyone that knows me knows that I love data. And I showed the team the data and the path, but it was up to these 26 girls to decide to follow the path. The Lady Eagles learned resilience the last three years, just falling short of the goal, but they decided that the experience was only going to make them stronger, and they set forth working hard every day to have a shot at being the team that is celebrating in the water at the end of the state meet. Every coach of any sport would dream of a season where he or she never left practice, thinking, "Well, that just wasn't a good day of practice." In my 39 seasons of high school coaching, I never had a season like that until this year. Every day was a great day. It truly was a dream. One of the team's main goals of the regular season was to beat Glastonbury at Glastonbury for the first time in over two decades. They did that just four weeks into the season, and they did it on the last relay, drawing from that growth mindset and coming back from 18 points down at the halfway mark of the meet. For those not familiar with swim meets, and I'm definitely not a Patriots fan, but that point deficit is like being down 28 to 3 in the fourth quarter of the Super Bowl and still winning. Before the last relay, I gathered the team and told them all we had to do was get second and third on the final relay to win, and that is exactly what the team did after losing on the final relay the year before. The team learned across the river that day that they could do something unbelievable and just rode that wave all the way to November. I've seen a lot of incredible days at state meets, but no prelims was like the prelims that the Lady Eagles had this year. We were ranked fifth before prelims and shot all the way up to first before the finals. I've coached a long time and often visualized what it would be like to win a state title. But that day at finals was nothing like I dreamed of. I always thought that the team was going to be tight or edgy, but instead, they were confident and poised, because they had learned and practiced that in practices every day. Of course, they were nervous, but they were prepared to take home the title to Weathersfield. In many ways, state finals just seemed like another big duel meet, like that day at Glastonbury. And when we got to the end of the meet, surprise, surprise, it came down to the last relay. Just like eight weeks before, when I gathered the team together at Glastonbury to tell them we just needed second and third to win, here we were at state finals, trying to win the first state title in school history, and I got to gather them together to tell them that all we needed to do was to get fourth or better, and we would be the ones jumping in the pool. It was literally the same thing we had done in that duel meet. I actually remember saying to the group at finals, "This is just like we did at Glastonbury. Obviously, we succeeded, because I am here talking to you today." They got second in that relay to knock off Pomprog. I'll never forget cheering for that last relay, surrounded by all the girls going nuts, all of us. Imagine for almost four minutes watching everything a group had worked for for years. Three-hour practices the first week of the season, swimming four miles a day on an easy day, learning new dives on the board, coming to practice at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday morning when all their friends are asleep, all the perseverance, all the dedication, all the commitment and hard work, literally coming true over the course of four minutes, just about the time since I started talking to you. So as we wrap up, I go back to the three things I try to teach every year: set a goal, work hard for it, and believe you can grow into the person who achieves it. And this team did that. They lived it. They set a huge goal, showed up every day, and used every setback to get stronger. That's why they ended up as the state champions. But more importantly, it's how they did it, together encouraging each other every step of the way. Thank you again for celebrating this great group of young women and for supporting a program built on goals, hard work, and a growth mindset. There was no red light, so I think I did good.
We'll have you come-
Yes. Yes.
We'll have you come up in a minute to take a picture with you. We would love that. Before that, we have any questions?
We'd just like to have all the girls' names, you know, just if we could identify each of the kids would be great.
Come on up and trick yourselves.
Call them up one at a time, so we can get their name into the minute.
Come on, come on. You guys aren't shy. Trust me.
Okay.
Just say your name and your year, I guess.
I'm Claire Smith, and I'm a junior.
I'm Elizabeth Mann, and I'm a senior.
I'm Georgia Evans, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Madison Kelly, and I'm a junior.
I'm Lillian Parker, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Caitlin Farrelly, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Morgan Tracy, and I'm a junior.
I'm Summer Miller, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Jill Stangaron, I'm a freshman.
I'm Tali McDonald, I'm a freshman.
I'm McKenna Linsky, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Leah Elwood, I'm a freshman.
I'm Madeline Cardney, and I'm a junior.
I'm Julia Marselinas, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Surenafus, and I'm a senior.
I'm Heather Stetson, and I'm a coach.
We wanted to do that so we could get your name forever cemented into the minutes of the Board of Education for Weathersfield Public Schools.
Okay. Any questions, comments, ma'am?
Yeah, I just have a comment. It doesn't sound like there's too many seniors, so we fully expect you to be back here next year with a similar-looking group. I just want to thank A.D., Coach, and the whole team for coming here tonight. It sounds like you truly embody the definition of student-athlete. Sounds like you have good grades, and you're awesome in the pool and on the diving board. I remember when I was in high school, the swimming and diving team was always awesome, and it was the CCC West when I was here. They always won it, but they never won the state championship. It's awesome that you guys got over that hump, and you guys got it done. We're all very proud of you. Very.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I just want to thank you, too. And poised and smart, and we have our scholar athletes here, you're going to take this with you for the rest of your life, so enjoy every minute of it. Thank you for making us so proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know you guys have to go, but I want you to come up here with your backs toward- and bring the-
That's picture. Go up. The board should go up, too.
Guys, you want to go up? Come on.
Letting summer dress up.
Go out there? Yes.
Amongst the-
Marjorie. 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 Want to be in the shop? Marjorie.
We're all going to be happy.
All right, thank you.
I'm a professional doggy paddler, so.
Oh, my gosh. We got a hook for you. Yeah, right. I am not a swimmer, so I think it's awesome.
Thanks, Coach. Great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are we still doing this?
And just before we go, sorry. During this season, Coach Lee also received his 300th victory, which is also a great accomplishment.
Okay, thank you again. And we have another staff recognition, too, tonight. We have our Weathersfield Public School teacher, author, Heather Fashara, and she is here with her book, Learning Looks Different. She's not here. It's you. You don't look like her.
No, no, I don't look like her, and she's probably very fortunate that I don't.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. But thank you, guys. Thank you for having us here tonight. Tonight, we actually have a little bit of a surprise, a little more than that. We actually brought with us both of our English language learner teachers, as well as some students from our L department and their families, to present some of their work. And so, as a part of that, we wanted to show off not only how important Heather and Alexis are to us, but the hard work of our students. And so, I am going to start with honoring Heather and her hard work. Heather and I actually joined the Weathersfield Public Schools together seven years ago. We both locked in from districts outside of Weathersfield. We've been here seven years. Heather actually was the very first certified L teacher at Hanmer, and I think maybe only the third in the district. So it just represents how young this program is. But to put it into perspective where we are right now, in Weathersfield Public Schools, I believe it's one in every three families has a second language spoken in the home. And at Hanmer School, we just did the math real quick, just shy of 21%. It's 20.8% of our student population is represented in our L department. And about 50% of our families have a second language spoken in their home. So Weathersfield is really very diversified, and Hanmer School really represents that, and we're very proud of that, and we're proud to have our families here tonight with us. I have had the great honor over the last couple of years, not only the last seven years now to work with Heather, but the last two years, I've watched Heather do a couple really important things. Heather went back to school two years ago to Central Connecticut State University and received a six-year diploma in educational leadership, got her O-92 in, so not only administration, but with a focus on special education. And I know this is a subject very near and dear to her heart, as it is to mine. And I had the great honor of working with Heather and kind of coaching her through that program, and that was a really honor of my career to help her with that. And then, surprise, surprise, as she finished that program, suddenly, she's like, "Hey, by the way, I wrote a book." So while being a mom, a full-time teacher, and a full-time student, she managed to find time to write this book. And so, I did trick her into this. She did not realize she was doing this until late in the game, but I did ask her to sign a copy of this, and we'd like to present this to you, the Board of Education, a signed copy of her book to you guys here tonight.
Oh, thank you.
And then we're going to call them up.
Very much.
So I'm going to call Heather Fashara and Alexis Malika, our two. So again, we love acronym. It's right now, we're switching from ML to EL, LMNOP, Little Meaning No Official Purpose. Feel free to use that. That's from John Laverdy Heart Republic Schools. With that said, I do want to turn it over to Heather and Alexis, and then I'm very excited to turn it over to our students to present some of their work.
Great.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, everyone. I'm Alexis Malika. I am the second EL teacher, ML teacher at Hanmer. Tonight, we have some very excited fourth and fifth graders to share with you some of their writing they've worked on. Something that Heather and I really strive to do is, like her book says, is provide a level playing field for all of our learners. So what we do when we pull them out is we provide them with the work that they would get in the classroom, but it's very scaffolded. After each unit, we have a writing component where we spend a lot of time, step by step, going through each process and how all of the elements that they need to have in their writing. So this unit, we worked on argumentative writing. And our fourth grader, Nicole Zhang, had to write an argumentative essay, and it prompted her to think about if people should build in a flood zone. So Nicole, could you please come on up to read your essay?
Oh, good.
As she walks up, I'll just explain some of the things that we required them to have were a hook, a strong claim, and then we provided them with all of the elements of having a strong argument, their reasons, their evidence, and then a closing. And Nicole did a really good job, so welcome, Nicole.
I believe that people should not build in flood zones. The first reason is because North Carolina has a lot of hurricanes and can cause a lot of damage to buildings. My second reason is because trying to build in a flood zone in the wrong place can make flooding worse. My third reason is because FEMA wants to make more wetlands to help stop flooding. My fourth reason is because hurricanes can happen again and again and can damage newly constructed buildings. My first reason is that people should not build in flood zones is because hurricanes can happen in North Carolina, and they can cause a lot of damage to buildings. According to the text, "More Wetlands Needed," it says, "A storm surge is the biggest danger during hurricane. This happens when ocean water gets very high." My second reason is because trying to build in a flood zone in the wrong place can make flooding worse. According to the text, "How to Build in a Flood Zone," it says, "It can actually make flooding worse in nearby area. It makes it worse because you need concrete and dirt." Third, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, wants to make more wetlands to help stop flooding. It is important for builders to remember that wetlands help keep people safe from storms. Wetlands help to keep people safe from storms, because extra water goes into the wetland, so it doesn't flood. My fourth reason is because hurricanes happen again and again and can damage newly constructed buildings. According to the text, "The Bay on Flood Zones," it says, "They argue that builders are follow rules to make buildings as safe as possible." And as a conclusion, I believe that people should not build in flood zones. I believe this because many hurricanes happen in North Carolina and cause a lot of damage to buildings. Trying to build in a flood zone in the wrong place can make flooding worse. FEMA wants to make more wetlands to help stop flooding, and because hurricanes happen again and again, it could damage newly constructed buildings. By Nicole Zhang.
I'm Heather. I'm the other ESL teacher at Hanmer. So next, we have a few fifth graders here who are very excited to share their argumentative essay, and they had to write about whether or not kids should have cell phones. First, we're going to have Yura come up.
Kids Should Have Cellphones by Yuri Kozmich. Did you know that parents across the generations, 11 to 13 years old, are the optimal age for a child to receive their first cellphone? Phones are good, because you can talk to your friends, you can play video games, and keep in touch with your parents. But phones are distracting from schoolwork and their life. I believe that kids should have cell phones. Smartphones can help kids with research, shows that 65% of students report using a phone to look up information or get homework help at least sometimes. When kids are stuck in a math problem, they can search it up, and also, they can use ChatGPT to help themselves. Having cell phones helps kids get fast, help fast in an emergency. Study found that about 84% of kids having a phone makes them feel safer. You can call your parents 911 or people that you know. When your house is burning and you are home alone, if somebody tries to kidnap you, when you are hanging out with your friends, you can call 911. When you are lost, you can send your parents a pin with your location, and they can drive to pick you up. Cell phones make it easy for kids to keep in touch with their family and their friends. One survey showed that over 70% of families use texting to coordinate pickups and after-school plans. You can call your parents to pick you up after school and ask what you are going to do after school. When you move into a different country, you can still call your friends on your phone. I believe that kids should have cell phones. Smartphones can help with schoolwork. Having cell phones help kids get fast in an emergency. Cell phones make it easy for kids to keep in touch with their family.
Thank you, Yura. That was a very strong argument, and I think the record should reflect, he does have a phone, so maybe that worked. Hava, come on up.
Should Kids Have Cellphones by Hava Mahmudawa. Did you know that over half of Americans believe it's important for kids to have access to a cellphone? During the school day by age 13, a cellphone is an electronic device that helps kids get where they need to go. Some people say that phones are bad for kids' eyes. It would be unhealthy for school, because it will make kids too tired to learn. I believe kids need a cellphone. If a person steals your stuff, you can use your cellphone to call a parent, sibling, or 911. It will help kids with their schoolwork, and during activities, they can call each other and say what activity they want to do. My first reason is that having a cellphone helps kids or teens get where help fast in an emergency. A study found that about 84% of teens say having a phone makes them feel safe, because they can call or text a parent when they need help. If there is a fire, they can call a fire department to be safe. My second reason is that cell phones make it easy for teens to keep in contact with parents, siblings, and friends. When plans change after school, during school, school during activities, a quick call or text keep everyone informed. It can help when a teacher says something and you need to tell your mom about it. My third reason is that smartphones can help kids with any hard schoolwork. Kids can use educational apps to look up facts and calculators to check math works. It can be helpful for teens and other kids with any problems that are hard to do. I believe kids should have phones. It would help when your teacher gives you hard math work. If you're lost, your parent can track your phone. Teens can talk with their parents or their old friends. Kids will be safer and happier with a cellphone.
Next, we have Mustafa, and Mustafa is the only one out of 10 fifth graders who wrote that students or that children should not have cell phones.
Mustafa. Good boy.
Yeah. Did you know that in classrooms that banned phones saw improvements? Some people believe that kids should have cell phones. I believe that kids should not have cell phones. Cell phones make students learn less. Kids with phones get less sleep, and kids with phones get bullied online. I believe that kids should not have cell phones. My first reason kids should not have cell phones is because cell phones make students learn less. One study found that classrooms that banned phones saw improvements in tests by 6%. This is good, because kids that still have cell phones get bad grades. My second reason kids should not have cell phones is because kids with phones get less sleep. Research found out that 70% of teens check their phones and get bad grades. This is bad, because teens get bad grades and have trouble listening. My third reason kids should not have cell phones is because kids with phones get bullied online. 15% to 35% of students get cyberbullied. This is bad, because kids with phones get bullied. I think that, I think kids should not have cell phones, because cell phones make kids learn less, kids with phones get less sleep, and kids with phones get bullied online. This is bad, this is bad, because kids with phones all night get less sleep. And by Mustafa Ustam.
I have to call, I think Mustafa is a future Hanmer School principal.
Next up, we have Ashley. Should Kids Have Cellphones by Ashley Reyes. Did you know in 2006, 74% of people save themselves because of their phone? I believe kids should be able to have a cellphone. Having a cellphone may help kids get help faster in an emergency. If kids get lost in a forest, they can get help fast if they have a cellphone. Kids having cell phones makes them stay in touch with family members or friends.
Kids having cell phones makes them stay in touch with family members or friends. A lot of cell phones can help kids with their homework or schoolwork. Cell phones have math games to help them with our hard problems. Some people say that kids should not have cell phones because they will they will be playing on it every game like Roblox. But some kids can actually use math games or search up something like a hard word. Kids can use their cell phones by getting help in an emergency. If they didn't have a cellphone, it would take longer time to get help. A study found out that eighty-four percent of teens say having a cellphone makes them feel safer because they can call their family members and friends or siblings. Kids having a cellphone makes them stay in touch with family members, friends, or siblings. Over seventy percent of families use texting or school pickup lines or school plans. Also, kids should have cell phones because they can call or text like on Roblox, on with their friends that live far away. Cell phones can help kids with their homework and schoolwork. Kids can use math games to help them with their homework or schoolwork. If something is too hard or if the kids get are stuck on a hard problem or question, they can go on their phone to search up what the hard question means or word. I believe kids should be able to have a cellphone because having a cellphone may help kids get help faster in an emergency. Cell phones make them easier for kids to stay in touch with their family members or siblings. A lot of cell phones can help kids with their homework.
Hey, and last, we have Erdi.
Author's in the house.
That's a future superintendent right there.
Did you know that eighty-eight percent of Americans think it's necessary for kids to have a cellphone? But some people think kids should not should have a cellphone. I believe kids should have a cellphone. I think this because phones can help kids with schoolwork. Kids can call someone in case of emergency, and cell phones make it easier to keep in touch with parents and siblings. One reason why kids should have cell phones is that it can help kids with homework. According to Source One, sixty-five percent of students report using a cellphone helps them with homework. This is important because some parents can't help their kids. My second reason why kids should have a cellphone is kids can call someone in case of emergency. Based on what I read in the article, eighty-five percent of teens report having a phone makes them feel safer. This is important because if something happens to them, they can get help from other people. My third reason is that you can keep in touch with friends and family. According to Why Having a Cellphone Can Be Good for Kids, having a cellphone can make pickup plans easier, and it can help kids with keep in touch with parents and friends. In conclusion, I believe kids should have cell phones. Phones can help kids with schoolwork. Kids can call someone in case of emergency, and cell phones make it easier to keep in touch with their family. By Erdi.
Thank you very much for listening to our students. You all did such a nice job and we're so proud of how well you're doing with your writing.
Such articulate young people. We were so happy to have them tonight. Thank you so much to two wonderful teachers.
Thank you.
Any comments from the board before we move on? Any comments?
I'm on team Mustafa.
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for coming tonight. We're not in these schools, so we don't always see what is going on in them. So we really love it when teachers and authors and principals and especially families and students can come and show us what is going on in these schools. You should all be very proud of these kids. Not only did they not only did they write what they wrote, but they got up here and they spoke in front of us all, which can be scary. We appreciate you. We appreciate your work, and we thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Marjorie, do you want to say?
I just want to say thank you for coming out and the families to watch this. And it's so brave for you to come up and speak and read your essays in front of everybody, and you did such a great job. It's a lot of work just getting your ideas on paper and then organizing them and revising them. And it's just hard work really pays, and it really showed. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to these amazing teachers for sort of sharing this moment. It seemed like maybe on the agenda, the moment was going to be about you and your book. And then you sort of took that and shone a light on your students. And I think that just really speaks so highly of you as an educator and of the culture that is, you know, present at Hanmer and throughout Weathersfield. And in addition to the amazing writing and speaking that we just heard, I love looking at the families and how proud they are of their kids. And so thank you so much for being here tonight.
And I want to thank you too. And teachers, thank you so much. You know, when we first started teaching persuasive writing, most of us were a little apprehensive about, you know, what can they possibly argue about? Give a child a piece of paper and tell them that they can persuade somebody for something. It was amazing. It's like they've been waiting to tell us their opinions. So thank you very much for showing them and giving them the opportunity. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Next on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes for our regular Board of Ed meeting on November twenty-fifth, 2025. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Anyone? Okay, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
On page one, Ellen, I was not present at the meeting. And it lists me as present. On page, well, that's going to be on the last page. It has me present for executive session. I was not present for executive session. And I'm not sure if it matters, but on the bottom of the page, it says page seven of six. It should say page seven of seven. I'm not sure if that matters for the official record. But definitely strike me from the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else for changes? Okay, with those changes, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Those minutes are approved. And now, if there's anyone wishing to make a public comment, please come on up to the podium and state your name and address. And may I remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes. And another reminder, board members do not make comments immediately following a resident having comments up at the podium. So thank you for your understanding. Okay, Mr. Whibley, you have some communication on your entry report tonight.
I do. So in the board packet, reference item number two is a little bit of a teaser.
Yeah.
I plan on presenting to the Board of Education in January what's called the State of the Schools, my entry findings. So I figured at this point, I had been saying I was planning on meeting with one hundred and fifty and two hundred students, teachers, parents, residents, community members, community leaders across Weathersfield schools. And Ms. Underhill came into my office very excited two weeks ago, and she said, how many people do you think you've met with? And I said, I don't know, one hundred and eighty? And she said, no, three hundred and sixty-three. So I've put in my log of everyone that I've met with going back to my very first meeting back in May was with Chairwoman Granado and Mr. Roberts. I met with you guys on May fourteenth. All the way up to I did another meeting this week as well. So I have all the, you know, all the adults. We didn't put the kids' names in, but we just, we didn't want to identify the kids, but we just kind of put placeholders in there so that you see who they, you know, where they were and when they were. Some of them were one-on-one meetings with, you know, with staff and community members. Some of them were in focus group format. And I'll be looking forward to kind of sharing with the board next month a little bit about what I learned in talking to all the stakeholders. And I'll be kind of giving you like a state of the schools and here's what the superintendent of schools thinks might be pathways forward for us to kind of travel together over the coming years. So I'm really excited with with that. I'll pause for any questions or thoughts. And then I had one other thing I wanted to mention as part of my report.
Any comments, thoughts, questions? Okay.
Madam Chair, normally I like to provide the superintendent's informational update to the board at the second meeting every month. Because of the holiday break, we won't have a second board meeting. But I also, and we just had a report a very short time ago. So and we have a couple more weeks of school. So what I will be doing this month is I will be providing the report to the Board of Education before the holiday break via email. And I'll enter it to, you know, I'll provide it to the board and the public record at our first January meeting, just as a point of record. But just so the board members know, you can anticipate receiving my report before we we leave for the holiday break.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from anyone? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will move on. Tonight, we have no action items. And also, this evening, we will be talking about, oh, Finance and Operations Committee. We will have that meeting which was held. And we're not going to do that. Just go.
Okay.
No action items reports. So we have meetings held, Finance and Operations Committee, which we just left. And I'm always in awe that he gets these minutes done.
Yep, thank you, Bobby.
Matt?
So prior to tonight's Board of Ed meeting, the Finance and Operations Committee met. I believe it was the longest meeting we've ever had since I've been on the board, and we had a lot of discussion. We have a new member. It was nice to have Gabby present with us. And we actually had some visitors, not to be named, but they were present as well. We are currently over budget. Unlike last time I gave these minutes where we were under budget, and that is due to five unexpected outplacements, two of those being expulsions. We're looking at the possibility of having one more outplacement as well. We did realize some savings in some areas of spending, but we realized unbudgeted expenditures above those amounts in other areas, mostly outplacements. We discussed state excess cost reimbursement rates and special ed grants for us to engage our state representatives and senators about. And we started early discussion for the upcoming budget cycle as well as a newly planned capital priority list to begin monitoring our physical facilities. That was it.
Great, and thank you, Matt. All right, we do have some meetings scheduled right up to the beginning of next school year in 2026. Community and Public Relations, twelve, ten, twenty-five. The CRET Council has been, it won't be this month. They will have it next month. It's been canceled. WEC is on, is that January twelfth?
Yes.
Twenty-six, okay. And Human Resource and Personnel on January thirteenth, 2026. And is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come on up and state your name and address. And let me remind you, you have a five-minute limit. Okay, we'll just keep moving on. Are there any board comments?
So I just wanted to give everybody an update. I'm the rep for the Building Committee.
Thank you.
We met last night. They have interviewed three different architecture firms. We reviewed that. We are going to go back with them for some more questions. And we will have hopefully a decision at our next meeting, which is January fifth. And we will hopefully bring a recommendation to the Board of Education in January. And then in turn, it will be brought before Town Council for approval.
Thank you, Amanda, and thank you. I'm so glad you're on this committee. It's a continuation. You've been on it since the beginning. Am I correct? Great. That's wonderful. Anyone else with comments?
Yes. So I apologize. I was in here last meeting. Just want to congratulate the boys soccer team on their state championship. I'm a little past doing that. I was also fortunate to attend the Cabe Caps Conference in November. Always a great opportunity to learn and network. And I know there was a lot of us there this year, which was great to see. So and Miguel Cardona came and spoke to us. And he's very insightful, and it's great to have the former Secretary of Education to come back and talk. And then today was new board members and leadership training by Cabe at Sheridan and Hartford. I was fortunate enough to speak there to about one hundred and fifty new board members about budgets. So but it's great to see lots of people being engaged in professional development and being in the board. That's it. And oh, happy holidays since we are not back for everybody.
That's true.
Anyone else? Yes, Mindy.
So I was able to attend said Cabe Convention today. Chuck did a great job talking about budgets. And it was it was really nice just to hear more from throughout the state of how boards of education are operating. We got to hear from the Commissioner of the Department of Education for the state. And, you know, and then I had a full BOE day. I did that today. And then I got to have a one-on-one with Superintendent Whibley. Got to attend, I was an observer, a guest at Finance Committee, and now here today. So I think I'm just reflective of how, you know, I learned what boards should do and how they should operate in sort of the abstract this morning. And then being able to see it all, I feel like we are doing it the right way. And just to sit in that Finance Committee and hear the collaboration of, you know, our Finance and Operations Director and, you know, our superintendent and our engaged board members and just collaborating to do what's best for students and residents. Call me green, but it was a really, it was just really nice to see it all in action. So thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Marjorie?
Oh, I just want to talk about a couple things. I was at the WS SBC meeting this past Thursday, and it was a really full, long meeting. And we'd got a lot, we talked about a lot of things, school schedules, e-bikes, safety, plans for the future. It was a really good gathering of parents. And Kevin Sullivan from Bike Walk Weather Shield was there as well. And there's just more talk of maybe collaborating with with that group. Whether, and that's, one of the issues was, you know, learning about e-bikes and e-bike safeties, and so many kids are getting them, and they don't understand the rules and their state laws. And there's like various issues, and parents don't always know either. So that was an issue. Maybe we'll start to get going with as far as like spreading out to parents. And I believe there's talk of having an internet safety night again to, you know, educate parents on cell phones and social media risks. And so that's all good stuff coming up. I also attended Safe Grad Meeting, and we're gearing up for a few more fundraisers. Right now, there's a raffle, so if you want to purchase a ticket, it's it's an online raffle link. And they're also selling Weathersfield shirts and some swag, and it looks really good and fun for the holidays if you want to give a gift. And there's also going to be a Singo Night on February fifth. For their, instead of a parents' night out, it's going to be Singo, which is music bingo. So at Pickin', Thursday, February fifth. And instead of bingo, like B six or whatever, it's it's like songs. And I don't know if anyone's ever played Singo before. I've done it one time at a restaurant. But you hear music, and you have to figure out if your song is on your card. And it's really fun. It's great. So that'll be our big raffle and night out for our, one of the bigger fundraisers for Safe Grad. And I think I had one more thing. Oh, I just want to congratulate again, one last time, the swim team, Swim and Dive Team for all their hard work and amazing accomplishments this year. And I really look forward to, you know, future years. I did not realize how many freshmen were on that team. And I was like, wow, this is going to be an amazing, amazing trip for the next few years as they get better and better.
Anyone else? I'd just like to do some closing remarks. I do love these holiday times, the holiday times. I know, I got it right here. I do. As we wrap up another successful and busy year in our schools and community, I want to shout out my heartfelt thanks to everyone involved, from dedicated educators we saw tonight, enthusiastic students we saw tonight, and supportive families. We've created an environment where learning can thrive, and let's celebrate that. And looking to 2026, I'm excited about the possibilities that lie ahead. Let's continue to build on our successes, working together to foster growth and learning for all. So thank you, Weathersfield. Thank you, Board of Ed. Thank you, Superintendent and administrators for a wonderful year. And here's to an amazing journey ahead. So thank you all. And now, I don't forget her because I so like her. And we saw each other freezing on holidays on Main the other night. Anushka, our Weathersfield High School rep is here to inform us of life at the high school.
So good evening, everyone. Here's a quick update on what's been happening these past few weeks at the high school. So starting off, students and Ms. Galvin's CCSU Multicultural Education Course went to CCSU this past Friday and presented their final projects to the college. And presented their final projects to the college professors overseeing this course, as well as some of the college students who are taking the course. Many of them said that although it was nerve-wracking, it was a great experience. And additionally, the winter choral and band concerts are taking place today as well as Thursday if you want to get a ticket. As we get closer to the end of the year, seniors are starting to hear back from colleges, so we're both simultaneously nervous and excited. Last Thursday, students in the Athletic Leadership Council welcomed welcomed some students from the Crec Academic of Computer Science and Engineering. For a joint team building and leadership development workshop facilitated by Empower Leadership, which is a local small business that works to improve leadership amongst high school students and college students. I was a part of this workshop and I thought it was a really great experience that allowed us to practice leadership through a variety of activities. That we can apply to our respective sports as well as both in and out the classroom. Just yesterday, the same council, as well as other upperclassmen, met and listened to Kendrick Moore, who's the Assistant Director of Equity and Leadership at the C I A C. Uh, Mr. Scanlon's known him for a while, so. Um, he led an engaging session where he focused on what leadership looks like in the high school, both athletically and academically. The transition from high school to colleges, the realities of college life, and more. Lastly, students who currently take Mrs. Haas's art classes or an E C E or A P Spanish traveled to New York City today to visit the Museum of Modern Art. Which is where I just came back from, actually, and that's what's been happening at the high school.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for? We could put her on the spot. Thank you very much and good luck on your pursuit of your next step. Please let us know.
Yes, I will.
Okay, all right. Um, no more comments? Any unfinished business tonight? I don't think so. So I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you all. Happy New Year and good night.